Good morning, everyone. Once we have everyone in the room, I will bring everyone in. I'm still missing Councilwoman Allen and Councilman Keys, but I'm going to bring in the rest of the council because there isn't one. All right, if everyone can hear me, all of council was in the room. You can go ahead and start your view.
Good morning, everyone. I just wanted to ask if you got the email that there will not be a financial meeting after today's meeting?
Yes, I received it, Kathy.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Ed, you want a face shield? No, your mask is on. I said you want a shield out of it. I brought it down, maybe speaking. As opposed, I have everything I need for this. Do we have good questions?
Do we have everyone?
Yes.
Good morning, everyone. Guess if there's anything we have on the agenda we'd like to discuss before our meeting today? Did they hear me?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if your mic's on.
Yeah, I know, like, George, like, the council over the past maybe ten years or so, when we had a certain person on council, when we had the moment of silence, they also offered a prayer. And I think it would be nice if we reinstituted that back into the format.
Would you like to be the one to give that prayer at our meeting? Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome.
I also want to comment on the fact that we didn't get the nomination in for Liz as president, possibly on a vote. And, you know, with no disrespect to Councilman Brzezinski, you know, I would like to mention that Liz is my choice.
Kathy, I was gonna bring that up also. I was gonna be making an amendment to that resolution when it comes up to vote regarding just the whole situation. I mean, there wasn't much communication to me. And I know, you know, I'm blaming myself also with not communicating much on this. But, yeah, I didn't really know Councilman Brzezinski was nominated till I saw the agenda. So I know we've been talking about nominations, so it wasn't the perfect scenario, as we'd all like to see it. But I will be making an amendment to the resolution to have Liz's nomination for council president.
Just so, this is, just so I understand, is there anyone I understand that both Mr. Brzezinski and Ms. Allen would like to be president. Is there anyone else that would have any interest in being president?
No.
If that's the case, then we don't need to make any more out of this than what there is. The default under the city's procedure is Robert's Rules of Order. So right now, you have a motion on the table. And the motion on the table is to appoint Mr. Brzezinski as president. That motion would pass if there are four votes in favor, four yeses. If there are not, then we don't have a president, and then it would open it up to the floor anyway. So rather than do anything and cause any grief or hardship, I mean, we can identify that there are two people that would like to be president. The first, you vote in order of the motion that's made first. The motion that's made first is for Mr. Brzezinski. So if you're voting yes for Mr. Brzezinski, that's effectively a no vote for Ms. Allen. If you're voting no for Mr. Brzezinski, that's effectively, it doesn't lock your vote, but that would be a yes vote for Ms. Allen. So if there are four votes that are yes for Mr. Brzezinski, we're done. If there are not, then we would take the nomination from the floor, and then you would vote on Ms. Allen. So it's really not going to be anything that's going to require any special motion. We've got two people that want to do it. We simply just need to identify in your own mind who you would like to see serve as president. I don't have any objection with anybody making any statement on any motion. You have the ability to comment. And so we don't need to hide that there's another candidate out there. You're just simply saying, look, I think I should be the president. I think I should be the president, and we simply vote.
Sounds pretty
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, can you repeat what you said about making a statement?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think you're gonna have a motion before you. And the way it works is that there's, I mean, we often streamline it, but there's a motion, there's a second, and then there's public, there's comment. So I think if Ms. Allen, if you feel that you want to say, hey, I'd like to be president, so I would, I would ask that you vote no on this first motion, that's completely appropriate.
Okay, but I want to, I want to say more than that. I just want to asking people to vote no. I want to state my qualifications.
No, and there's, there's nothing wrong with that.
Okay.
And Mr. Brzezinski, there's nothing wrong with you making a comment. And to the other five council members, there's nothing wrong with you making a comment. I just, I don't want to, I don't want to get so bogged down with procedure over substance. We already have the motion on the floor. We don't need to change it. You just simply would vote on that motion, but understand, if you're voting yes, then you're voting for Mr. Brzezinski to be president. If you're voting no, understand that what's going to come right after that would be a motion from the floor to make Ms. Allen the president. So in your own mind, you need to figure out who you want to be president. Whoever has four, that's who wins.
Makes sense to me. Thank you, thank you, Ed.
You bet.
Yep, you're right, correct. Thank you.
Morning.
I actually have a question for Attorney Vetta, since he's on the line. And so there's a second resolution involving leadership positions on council. Would that follow the first, or would that go down? It's stated under new business, or would it go, you know, into the body of the meeting?
Well, I'm not, what specific motion?
Well, there's a resolution sponsored by Mel Witherspoon, nominate Michael Keys for vice, vice president.
Oh, oh.
Under new business.
That would be the same. So I think you would do that right after. You have to pick your president. Your president's going to run your meeting. Vice president would be selected as well. And the vice president, if someone else says, hey, I'd like to be vice president, you would speak up at the time that there's discussion on the motion regarding you, Mr. Keys.
Okay.
Paul, are you with us?
Yeah, yes, I am.
Just to confirm with everyone, we held off on a finance meeting. You're gonna have more, more of the final numbers next month?
Yeah, I would say, I'm sorry for interrupting. I told Kathy yesterday that the treasurer's office is working on everything, getting everything up. Like, we have the final Burkheimer numbers. Ed and Kaz, you know, with the end of the year and the mad rush for people to get their payments in by the end of December, they normally leave, and I don't want to speak for them, but they normally leave the, what they call leave the window open for a day or so, so that if anybody mailed any checks in, and you know, with, with the first being on a Friday, and it's going to take them, you know, these few days, the beginning of the week, to get everything done. Ed told us yesterday, he thought Thursday or Friday, he would have pretty much everything in, so we could, we can do our cash basis numbers. I was gonna try to work on it, you know, as soon as possible, get something out to everybody by the middle of next week or so. And then if you wanted the, the second meeting of the month, you know, and then I got to give it to the mayor too, to let him see what, what, what happened, obviously, before I can, you know, release that. But if it was okay, the second meeting of the month, you know, in two, or two weeks from now, we could, we could get together fifteen minutes or a half hour early and talk about this stuff then. If, if, I mean, if that's what council wants, or you want to wait till February or so, whatever's better. Or, I mean, you as a group get together and somebody get back to me. So I think I just talked too much, didn't I? So but that's where we're at. That's where we're at.
Thank you, Paul.
But I am going to say, as I've been saying every month for the last three or four months, the, the really odd numbers are those numbers that we were, you know, we keep getting from Burkheimer. You know, with, with the unemployment rate in the state of Pennsylvania, and the federal unemployment rate that the US Department of Labor keeps putting out every month, our, our collections are, are pretty good comparatively speaking. So I don't know what that means. And again, I've always say, you know, is the next quarter going to be the one that falls off the table? But the, the numbers, the, the dollars, the numbers that we've collected over the last over the last half of the year are are are, you know, they're not, they're not what we were thinking they were going to be, you know, back in April and May. So as soon as we get all that stuff together, I'll get a copy up the mayor. He'll give me the okay to send it out and then we'll, we'll post it on SharePoint or I'll email it to everybody so everybody can get a chance to look at it.
This ain't like us, right?
I would like to take this opportunity to wish everyone a Happy New Years. And I hope you had a Merry Christmas and you enjoyed your holidays. I look forward to rolling up my sleeves and getting busy.
And health is good, doll that COVID Mike. COVID is. Good to hear.
I would like to take this time when we have our meeting to have a moment of silence for the family of Jim Herdsek, who passed away suddenly, who was a former school district director for many years and committed himself to helping the children of the city of Erie very graciously for many years. And my former next door neighbor Mildred Byers, who was 100 years old, passed away. And she was my awesome neighbor for at least 25 years. And she was a very wise woman who taught me so much and being a good person, very wise. And also, if you've been reading the newspaper obituaries, we've had so many deaths in our city, whether they're not, whether they're from COVID or what have you. There were nine pages of obituaries in Sunday's paper and that seems to be a sad trend as we mourn our loved ones and people who pass away around our Erie County neighbors. Thank you.
No, they're really. So now when it says mute, I am heard. All right, I got you now. You got the icicles off you yet? Icicles off of you after diving into the water? All right. Good morning, everyone. For a change, we're on time at our council meeting. Took the last one for us to finally be there, but thank you all. And Lori, if we would. You're you're muted. No. I'm sorry, we, I don't hear you here.
No, I don't.
Better, little bit. Little better. How's this?
Now it seems like I'm hearing her through somebody else's mic.
We didn't hear you. What'd you say? Mm mm. Is your vol, or it wouldn't be your volume. It's like gets. Testing. Who is that from? Huh? What's your phone say? Please stand by. We work out our technical difficulties. No. The only reason we hear you, you're in, we're in house.
She's she's fading in and out.
I wish, but.
We're all here now.
Ready, go. Barely, like way in the distance. It's a plane, it's a bird, it's. No, that was Mel. That was a Mel sigh. I blame the audience. Well, I started it. You just want me to. Yeah, use it. Mike, you may have to, for citizens, then you may have to. Probably paid for new equipment or didn't we?
Hello.
Hey.
Am I good?
Yes.
Can I start?
Sure.
What did he say?
Sure.
Yeah, I I can't. I just want the chat to be. No, it's my only link to the citizens to be heard. All right, so. Am I gonna? Okay, Mike, I think we're good. If they can hear me. My apologies. Okay, roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, December 2nd, 2020 at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Winarski, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski. Mr. Winarski, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keyes, Mrs. Schoff, and Mr. Witherspoon. Please stand for a moment of silent meditation and a pledge of allegiance.
You're muted. I think so.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Let's not forget Jimmy Hertz, he was more than a great guy, great father, husband. He played baseball for ME D S I, that's the quarterback, go with that young man. Condolences to the Potasnek and the Costello families, everybody's in shock and everybody is hurting. Also, Dick Welceski, known as Richard's Real Estate, for a long time, 95 years old, he was buried yesterday. Kathy Schoff, do you want to mention your neighbor?
Yes, thank you, thinking of Mildred Byers, 100 years old, who passed away, a great next-door neighbor, thank you.
For the citizens, we're reinstituting a... Having a word of prayer at the beginning of our council meetings after the silence is viewed. Dear heavenly Father, we come before you today, just first of all thankful that you have brought us in to another year and that we are here to receive it, and we just ask that you be with this council as we proceed forward this year, that you help us grow in unity and strength, and that we might do what is best for the city at all times, at any cost, and this is our prayer that we submit to the most high. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a motion to accept the minutes from the 12/16/2020 council meeting and bills for payment on January 1st, 2021, January 8th, and January 15th. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keyes, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. Okay, we are going to go out of order, well, we're gonna have a resolution sponsored by Councilman Witherspoon and seconded by Councilman Winarski, nominating Mr. Ed Brzezinski as City Council President for 2021. Discussion?
Yes, I would like to make some comments. There are two people on council who would like to nominate me as council president, but we've been told that first we're gonna vote on the nomination of Ed Brzezinski. So, I want to review some things, and I sent council a lengthy email yesterday about why I would be the best candidate for council president. But I want to talk about what I read in the paper, the knock on me from Ed Brzezinski is quote that she doesn't follow the rules of order and cuts people off when they talk all the time. That's a really interesting observation, because since I have served on city council, there also have been people who've interrupted, but those people happen to be men. I also, I was, I know a lot about how council operates. I've covered council meetings as a journalist, I've followed council actions since I was a reporter and an editor, a columnist, and opinion writer. So, just before the council meeting started, I went to my favorite source of information right now, which is the ErieLibrary.org, where you can use your library card to access old Erie Times news stories. And I wanted to find some examples of council members who interrupt or talk above other people. And the first one I found, now, this was very hasty, I should have done this actually last night, I could have found many examples. The first one I found was a big shouting match between Ian Murray and Rick Philippi when he was mayor, Ian Murray when he was on council. So, I started thinking, God, what's another word I could put into the search engine and find a shouting match? So, I put in Braybender. Now, I could have put in Billy Braybender on the school board, or I could have put in Bobby Braybender on city council, but I, my search terms were Braybender and city council. And I just want to read to you part of a story I found from 1996. A comment from, actually, what I should have actually put in was Mario Bagnone, who is, you know, some people are today sitting in Mario Bagnone council chambers. So, a comment by Erie City Councilman Mario Bagnone about a proposed raise for the city's mayor prompted an angrier response from Mayor Joyce Savaccio and others on Wednesday. At the council meeting Wednesday, Bagnone said, "One reason a pay raise is not justified is because Savaccio does not need the money. She's single, she's getting a school pension, she has no children, she's not married," Bagnone said. Bagnone's comment met with a gasp from Councilwoman Gail Wright. "Oh, my gosh," she said as Bagnone spoke. Now, "oh, my gosh" is not my vocabulary, I'm sure I would have had an angrier response than that. "Just keep quiet," Bagnone snapped. So, that's just one example of the way council meetings have been conducted. So, to single me out and to criticize me for interrupting or talking at council is unfair. It's unfair, and it's sexist. I want to explain why I interrupt. I interrupt because there are members of council who do not follow the resolutions that we've passed by majority rule, including resolutions on how board and authority appointments should be filled and how streets should be given honorary names. In fact, I broke the rules at the very first council meeting I ever attended, when I decided that when we voted on something, that I would speak my yes or no vote out loud. I was sitting next to Councilman Bob Mersky, and he kind of poked me, he said, "That's against, that's against our rules. We don't speak our votes," which to me, all these years later, is still astounding in an age when we should be sensitive to people who are hearing impaired or visually impaired. We don't use the tote board, and we don't, we don't use our voices when we speak. In my three years on council, I've seen councilmen try to do end rounds, end runs around the spirit of open meeting laws, most recently, when we began to meet remotely because of COVID-19. I spent hours documenting the efforts by the outgoing council president who fought the request by Freda Tefler that technology should be used to allow constituents to speak during council meetings. The outgoing president wanted to keep a system in place in which comments could only be submitted by email, then read by the city clerk. I fought against the last-minute decision to allow council members to vote more than once at the same time for applicants to replace outgoing Councilman Bob Mersky after he was elected to the State House of Representatives. Those so-called rules, one person, six votes in a democracy, were thrust upon us moments before we took our votes. The next time we had to replace a council member after Casquattowski was elected as city treasurer, we finally agreed that it would be one vote per person. But when I pressed to have open interviews for finalist candidates, my request was rejected. Two council members recently had to be reminded about the rules for abstaining on a vote. These two council members, who by the way are the two candidates for, to lead council for 2021, abstained on the votes because they didn't want to make hard decisions. Our solicitor said, "You can only abstain when you have a conflict of interest, then you have to state your conflict of interest. You can't abstain because you say, 'I don't know enough about the issues,' or you don't want to be on the record as voting for or against something." I note that Mr. Brzezinski said in his comments in the newspaper, "I don't have a problem with Liz, she has a vast amount of knowledge and is a really quick learner." Well, thanks for that compliment, I guess. Yet, at the December 2nd council meeting, the comment that Mr. Brzezinski made that really irked me was, "Everyone knows she's a nut." That comment was repeated in a different way on Facebook by John Treter, who said that everyone knows that Liz Allen is quote, "B A T," and then you can fill in the next four letters, "crazy." Imagine that, a nut, batshit crazy. The kind of insults that are hurled at women in politics all the time. I guess I should be glad that I'm in good company. The Wall Street Journal didn't think I was a nut when a reporter wanted comments from a council member about downtown development. The New York Times did not think I was a nut when a reporter called me for comments about the impact of the abortion issue on Western Pennsylvania politics. The BBC Radio didn't think I was a nut when a producer invited me to be interviewed for its drive-time talk show the day after the November 3rd election. By the way, that interview was bumped a little bit later because of a live news event with Prime Minister of England Boris Johnson. That was pretty cool to know that I was following up Boris Johnson on the BBC. It's true that I've always been a really quick learner, but I was already deeply familiar with the issues facing the city when I was elected to city council. What I had suggested in the previous two times when I wanted to be considered for council president is that we need training and development for council members on a range of issues. That never happened, and so here we are today. I'm sure there are some of you who will judge me by the attire I chose to wear today. A shirt with actor Ed Asner as the character Lou Gramm from the Mary Tyler Moore Show that says, "You've got spunk." Thank you to all those who understand that, yes, I have spunk, and I've tried to use that to call attention to the many issues our city faces and to seek solutions, including restructuring how our committees work, how our liaisons are assigned, how we appoint people to boards and authorities, and how we tackle major issues. I think that we should be looking at, if we delineated the issues that face us, then we could restructure how our committees, so-called committees, work, because we really don't have any committees, other than the Finance Committee, which is a committee of the whole. I had also suggested that we use our study sessions, which we already have built into the calendar twice a month, as committee of the whole meetings, so that we could really grapple with the proposals that are going to come up on our agenda. Unfortunately, there are also people, including some on council, who embraced Lou Gramm's retort on the back of his shirt, "I hate spunk." I'm sorry that you hate spunk. I, I'm not a nut. I'm a good candidate for council president. I am disappointed that somebody who chose to call me a broad, who likes to push buttons, is being rewarded for those comments by being nominated to lead city council. When I visited my family at Thanksgiving time, I was telling my daughter-in-law about the broad comment, and my youngest granddaughter, who is blind, a few minutes later, I heard her saying, "Grandma's a button girl, Grandma's a button girl," and I was like, I wonder what Mariah's talking about? And then I realized she had overheard the conversation. I am happy to be a button woman. So, that's what I have to say.
Any other comments, council?
Yes, Mr. President, I do have a couple of comments. I did want to just note why I nominated Liz. I know there's been past discussion, you know, we've talked before about different goals for council, and when I was council president in 2015, we did try to set goals, we did have some goals back then. Yeah, I don't think we got everything done, but of course, it's impossible to do that. But I do think goal settings are very important, and again, that's why I supported Liz, because I know we'll set goals, because we really need to hold our feet to the fire and get something done. I know it's not always possible, given the many constraints that we have in government, but I think it's possible, I know she'll work hard and do the homework, thank you.
Thank you. Lori?
Voting on the resolution, Ms. Allen?
No.
Mr. Brennan?
No.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Mr. Keyes?
Yes.
Mrs. Schoff?
No.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Resolution passes four to three.
Change of guard there, fella. Yes, sir. You don't have, really, you don't have nothing, you just use that.
Lori, we have a presentation here.
We have a presentation today.
Ms. Schoff, I'd ask you to stand, but you don't have to. But on behalf of city council, we'd like to give you the outstanding Councilwoman of the Year Award. Let it be known that Kathy Schoff, Councilwoman, City of Erie, Pennsylvania, is receiving this recognition for her outstanding service to the citizens of Erie, Pennsylvania, and whereas she has given her time to fight for the rights of the homeless, and whereas she provided consistent, updated information to council on COVID-19 as a member of the COVID-19 task force, and as an elder statesman of city council, state woman. I personally wish to acknowledge Councilwoman Kathy Schoff as standing council person of the year. You made yourself available, you set a good example, you helped feed the hungry, you helped float the naked, you helped shelter the homeless. Presented to you on this day for Melvin Witherspoon and city council past president. Congratulations, and thank you so very much for your dedication and effort.
Thank you. Thank you very kindly. I'm speechless, thank you.
I would like to just simply say that I believe I'm somewhere in my 17th year in serving the city of Erie as a council member. And I have not seen anyone in that time that put the time in to the underprivileged in the community that you have done. I've seen them all. And in my past 17 years, you are outstanding. You do a dry job, you carry more weight than you should, you fight for especially the homeless. And I want to thank you, and it's my honor to present that to you. Thank you for your service, Kathy.
Thank you, Mel, thank you, everyone, thank you, Mel.
I'd like to comment. Oh, I'd just like to also thank you for your tireless work with the homeless. We know you're not gonna run to be reelected, but I want you to know that we'll keep your work, in the spirit of your work.
Thank you, Michael. I want to continue to be active in helping the people who need services in our Erie area, thank you.
Lori, we're good with, I think it stated it all in the first one.
I think I lost my video.
Today is the day of the technical difficulties.
We do this, though?
Sure.
Lori, if we take a moment? I don't know if we stand up and still talk, but it's the honorable, the hammer goes back to Mr. Winarski for one heck of a year. Thank you for common sense and great leadership.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim, this was- Thank you, Jim. This was a hard year during COVID. Thank you for being president in the year 2020 and 2019.
Thank you very much, because sometimes a president, not sometimes, most of the time a president is only as good as the vice president, and this is one of those years we'd all like to forget. It has been a tough year, but I appreciate everybody sticking with me and with us. This is not an easy job, especially in these times.
But I just want to thank everybody, and I wish Mr. Brzezinski the best of luck. We're here to help support, to move this city forward in a positive and productive pace. Thank you very much. We may continue, Lori. Oh, that's on you now. You're running this meeting.
Mr. Betsa, did you suggest that we go to the Vice President Resolution before the final passage of ordinances?
I think that would make the most sense, yes.
Okay, a resolution sponsored by Councilman Melvin Witherspoon, seconded by Councilman Jim Winarski, nominating Mr. Michael Keys as City Council Vice President for 2021. Discussion? Ms. Allen? Mr. Brennan? Mr. Brzezinski? Oops, he's supposed to be last. Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. Resolution passes seven yeas.
Mr. Keys, congratulations. Congratulations, sir. The East Side will be heard. Moving right along, I guess our comments will go toward the end of the meeting rather than to break it up now unless, Mike, would you like to say something? Yeah, let's wait till later. Let's get it going, Lori.
Okay.
Repository.
There are no repositories. We would go to citizens to be heard. I have Andrea Stelmack.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, City Council. My name's Andrea Stelmack. I live on Haybarger Avenue here in the City of Erie. And I am furious to see that you guys really missed an opportunity to have Liz Allen, who has continuously and always spoken for our community, lead City Council, and I am so disappointed. And I would like to say, is she being rude? Or have you been socially conditioned into believing that women should be warm, positive, and friendly at all times and are uncomfortable when they don't adhere to that behavior? Are you? Because it sure looks like it. Also, I'd really like to address that January is National Human Trafficking Month. Recently, it's been brought to my attention that our brand-new City Council President, Mr. Brzezinski, sold the Esquire II Building at 1901 West 26th Street, which is a well-known brothel. And I'm just curious, did you know that? Are you okay with that? Because I'm not okay with that. I'm not okay with a misogynistic person who laughs and cackles when we bring real issues to City Council and rolls his eyes. I'm looking right at you, Ed. Roll his eyes.
I'm sorry, but as former Vice President, you're not allowed to single one selective person out in our meetings.
Fuck that. I concede my time.
Next citizen, Freda Tupper.
Am I unmuted?
Yep, you are.
So, Happy New Year, and Kathy, that was a well-deserved honor. I would like to express my hope that in the next year, I see a City Council where we have residents, not just citizens, being heard. Please consider changing that terminology, and where there's the orderly, inclusive process of filling vacancies on boards and commissions, that there's really no reason that any vacancy has to be filled in such a hurry to go around that process of soliciting and reviewing applications in an open manner. I also encourage the council to adopt the process that the County Council uses, where they make the agenda packets available online. So I don't have to call Lori or Marilyn and ask for a copy of a specific resolution or an item, that it should be available. I was a little dismayed just now after Michael was elected to hear the comment, "The East Side will be heard." I'm not saying this but we already have too much of a certain side of town represented on the council, and we really don't need to glorify that. My other comment is, it's winter time, and once again, we have a preponderance of businesses who somehow feel that they don't have to comply with making their sidewalks accessible to people. It's, I don't care so much about, I do care about residents, but I'm more concerned about businesses who pay to have their parking lots and driveways cleared and then leave enormous snowberms in blocking the sidewalk, the berms which take weeks to melt. And I commend Leanne Parminter and her staff for receiving the complaints that I make about these berms and blockages of sidewalk. And I encourage my fellow residents to please submit to either the City Response Line or to the Traffic Engineers Office any instances of commercial properties that fail to clear their snow on the sidewalk and who leave huge snowberms. And I don't hold where the complaint businesses have that the plows come by and block what they cleared, because I had that situation, and I'm still responsible for clearing my sidewalk. So let's make the city safe and walkable for everybody.
Can you give us your address, please?
Oh, I got away with it last time. 1738 West 23rd Street, Erie.
Thank you, Freda. Cole Shenley?
Hi, City Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I appreciate your time today. I would like to express my extreme dismay at what has just taken place. I am very unhappy to see this turn of events. I'm very unhappy to see the way the votes went. I have nothing but respect for Ms. Allen and thought she would have made a great president of the City Council. I don't think that sexism should be something that is rewarded in the City Council. It's a throwback to the bad old days, the Tulio days. We don't need that. This is 2020. So I would like to say that, you know, there's a City Council elections this year, and I just want to say that, you know, I am a member of the Co-Chair of the Democratic Socialists of America, and I'm also a dues-paying member of Erie County United, and we will fight vehemently to get our people elected to City Council, and we will make changes. Thank you.
Mr. Shenley, can you give me your address, please?
Go on.
I can get it for you, Lori.
Thank you. Jasmine?
Hello, City Council. My name is Jasmine Flores. I live on East 10th Street here in the City of Erie, PA. My address should be on file. I am appreciative of your time today, but I am extremely disappointed on the change of events that occurred. Liz Allen would have been a phenomenal president, and the votes that took place, well, as you know, we are going to remember those, and we are going to campaign to make sure that we get more women on City Council, because the sexism is not going to be tolerated. It's 2021. We're not going to allow you to shut women up and make us seem weak and crazy when we're outspoken, because I'm a very outspoken person. And over the last two years, I've been working very hard to make sure my community has a voice, the actual lower East Side, you know, like second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, 10th, you know, all the actual addresses that are forgotten all the time. We are going to work to make sure that women are running for those City Council seats that are going to be up, because there's going to be four. And honestly, the only one that I feel deserves to be reelected is Councilwoman Liz Allen. We appreciate how thorough and precise you are. We appreciate you doing your information to, well, your end-of-things-to-do research to get the information you need to make the proper votes for your community, all the community, not just a handful of some. We're going to remember, and it's nice to know that Liz Allen has two more terms she could possibly serve, and time is ticking for other individuals, and the community is going to work to make sure that this election is definitely a good turnout after the presidential one. I yield the rest of my time. Have a good day.
Thank you, Jas. Lee Williams?
Good day, all. Lee Williams, 1043 West 10th Street, Erie, PA 16502. I would like to concur with the disappointment that others have expressed today, and my special, especially deep disappointment with those of you who struck the deal to elect Mr. Brzezinski. You've let the constituents who elected you down. It won't be forgotten. Mr. Shenley is correct. The memory will indeed last, so please reckon with that. Secondly, if you could wear your masks, please make sure to keep pulling your masks up over your noses. Otherwise, you're just setting a bad example for the folks that are ultimately watching, and it would be appreciated if the leadership would actually lead in these sorts of regards. Your public selves matter. We got to see Mr. Brzezinski's private self earlier in December, and needless to say, it wasn't over pretty. That private self influences this public self that we see before us. This public self should want to do the right thing by the constituents, the citizens, the residents of Erie City, Erie County, our home. Please take that to heart as well, and stand with us in representing us with masks, with proper protocols, with the sort of emphasis that we deserve as ultimately move forward. Lastly, I hope you will spend some of the time in your study sessions actually working on some of these private thoughts that you all seem to have, and your biases against women, against people of color, against poor folk, and other such ways that you demonstrate these ways of seeing your world. I hope you take seriously the role that, again, your public persona is informed by your private self, and that your goal is also to improve your private self, so that your public persona can actually be improved along the way too. Thanks for your time. Be well.
Cindy Pervis?
She there, Lori?
She unmuted herself. Cindy, you might have to switch your microphone. Cindy, I'll give you 30 seconds, and then we'll come back to you.
That 30 seconds?
That is 30 seconds.
Okay.
Elspeth? Elspeth Kaylee, 1232 West 11th. I'd like to reiterate what everyone else has been saying. Extremely disappointed, not at all surprised. I have two sons at home with me. This is the kind of thing that I teach them the opposite to do. You do not reward that kind of behavior with a promotion. And yeah, Erie County United, Erie DSA, other progressive organizations are going to do everything we can to put a stop to this kind of behavior and get people who actually represent everyone into these seats so that we don't have bad examples set, and we don't have poor role models. Mr. Williams made a good point, you know, beyond the sexism, racism that we all are aware of, the misogyny. You guys have to set a better example. I see you all sitting there, and until Lee said something, Jim, you don't even have your mask over your nose. You're putting Lori at risk. Everybody's at risk, okay? So I'm sorry, but yeah, wear your masks. Do better. My gosh, do not reward terrible moral character. Thank you.
Moving right along. Lori, time for ordinances.
Is there any other citizens? Do you have a last call or?
If she was on the list, I'm sorry. Ms. Paisley?
I'm present. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Let me take a deep breath, because I have a lot to say. My name is Devona Paisley, 1460 West 11th Street, Erie, PA. I first want to say, I'm a little perturbed that the citizens to be heard was right after the decision was made, but I'm also not shocked, because, you know, y'all make this decision, and this seems to be the style of government, of government leadership. I'm just going to speak from the heart real quick. I'm a community doula, a doula who brings in babies and supports families. Last morning, at 1:51, I witnessed the baby coming into this world, a baby that was born into the city of Erie, PA, a baby that deserves to be in the city, a baby that deserves to be heard, works to, and have a city that works to demand and implement change. When I was at that hospital, I had the opportunity to speak with a young man, a young black father, who was a new father. A situation happened, and I had to advocate for him. He then started looking and observing. He said, "Why are the younger nurses more engaged in understanding?" I looked at him, and I was like, "Whoa." He said, "You know what? I just am not understanding why young, why people, older people, demand respect, and then they don't respect us." Now, you will think that his statement is definitely ageist, and yeah, I can agree, it might have been. But also, what I heard was a hurt person, a person who has gone through stuff, a person who has not been heard. When I seen this decision just be made, that Ed Brzezinski is now president, it really made me frustrated, because in this city, our city deserves to move forward. It deserves to be progressive. We are doing so many things in this city to change the sexism and the misogyny and everything else, and yet, you guys' decision to make this person our president, our leader, is a shame. Now, I've met Mr. Brzezinski many times, and I have no personal agenda against him, but what I will say is, I do not agree with this decision. And I have no personal agenda against him, but what I will say is I do not agree with this decision. This person lacks accountability. And I truly believe that you all need to really take a step back and really work with this city. I have nothing else to say, but to say that the people that are fighting for this city, y'all about to see a lot of changes. So y'all time that you have up there in the seat, all of you, as a collective, need to fight harder. Now, the ones that made the decision to put the person in the seat, in this presidential seat, man, I have, I really hope that you guys can understand that what you just did was a lack of responsibility. That's all I have to say.
EJ, EJ, I apologize. I skipped over you. So EJ Fike?
Hear me? Awesome. Um, my name's EJ Fike. I'm at 1353 Patterson Avenue here in the city. Um, I just wanted to say, um, I basically echo everything that everyone else has said at this point. Very disappointing. I don't know Mr. Brzezinski. I've never met him. But I, you know, I watched the city council meetings and, um, I watched the meeting that, you know, where all this happened and took place. And then I watched the supposed apology meeting. And, you know, maybe something like that I would expect from like my uncle or something like that, to talk like that, but not from my city council members. And then especially when you know that this is an issue and there's articles in the newspaper about it and you guys still nominate this person and then you elect him, it's just a complete slap in the face to us.
Excuse me, EJ, I know you have good intentions and words, but we really do have a policy in place where we do not single people out. It's a part of our government.
Okay. So I, one, let me say that you need to change that policy. I should be able to single each and every single one of you out. Um, if I so feel to, because we elect you, you know, you ask us every year to put our trust into you and then we can't, we can't address you individually. That's ridiculous. There's absolutely zero accountability going on. Mr. Renarski, or the council, one, somebody on council said earlier, we need to move Erie forward. Taking a vote like this is not moving Erie forward. This is literally putting us back in the seventies and the eighties. It's absolutely ridiculous. It's like you don't understand what your citizens are saying or what they're feeling. And you're just completely out of touch, all of council. And I, I, I'm completely disappointed with one particular person who I won't single out, but I think we all know who I'm talking about. Um, who made, made this vote because you told us when you came on to council and, and when we elected you that you were going to make changes and you were going to be different. And now you're doing exactly what everyone else is doing. So I concede my time, completely disappointed. Thank you to those who voted no and to who nominated, um, Ms. Allen. Uh, you guys need to do better. It's an absolute joke. I can't even represent my city when things like this are going on. I try to brag about Erie and then we have stuff like this happen. It's an absolute joke.
Angelique Spragan?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so my name is Angelica Spragans and I live at 1416 West 11th Street. You probably just heard that address because my wife just spoke, Devana Paisley. I, um, really wanted to speak at this meeting and I've never spoken at a city council meeting before because I am quite understanding that most politicians, once they're elected, could give to, excuse my language, poops about what my actual opinion is. So what, the first thing I would like to say is that I was born and raised in Rochester, New York. I've watched us have a black mayor who my mother worked for. I've watched us have a black female mayor who currently is in office. In moving to Erie in 2006, the only thing I've consistently seen is older white males, or older males, because there are African-American males, in power that continuously hold on to that power. I am not going to address anybody specifically and I would like to add that that's an antiquated rule that almost no other liberal city council has. But what I would like to say is that if a man can sit in public on camera in Erie and disrespect directly a coworker, what do you expect our citizens to do in day-to-day life? How do you expect them to act towards one another? Again, I watched three of the individuals sitting on the city council run as my wife ran. The things I heard were some representatives calling black people colored. Other things I've heard were older citizens completely negating the fact that citizens' opinions are important and reiterating how important money is and how that should be the forefront and that's what runs the city. Those things, to me, do not speak to, to representing the people. What it speaks to is an egotistical drive to have as much power and control over other humans as possible. And Mr. Brzezinski, I will directly speak to you now because you're texting as I'm speaking. And we learn in kindergarten that when someone is speaking to us, we pay attention to what they're saying. In saying that, as a resident since 2006, I would rather leave Erie than continuously watch as you guys negate the forward movement that we need in this city. Racism will never be removed if you continue to, to elect and put people in power who, I'm not going to lie, have racist views, because I've heard the racist views personally. I've heard the misogynistic views personally, but it's okay because that's how Erie runs. So what I would like to say as a concerned citizen, I know a lot of you, again, you may not run, some of you may. I know what you think is right for our city and I can see what you think your idea of what is right for our city is. But please, please, please understand that once you're gone, this city has to function for younger people. And if it doesn't, you will be a city council of an empty, dead, lost city. You can't complain about the bad publicity Erie gets and then put a misogynistic racist as the president of our city council. Thank you for my time. And yeah, I did say that. So thank you for my time. Mr. Brzezinski, if you have something to say back, I'll give you my number. We can text and we can converse, but I know you're not into conversations like that. So again, I thank you for my time and I do concede the rest of it.
Cindy, we'll try you one more time. Cindy Purvis? Cindy, if you can hear me, I've asked you to unmute. Mr. President, I, uh, I'm not sure what's going on with Cindy's technical difficulties, but it's up to you as to what you want to do from here.
All right, well, if she can get on later, we'll, we'll break the rules for a second for her. Okay, otherwise, let's move along, Lori.
Any other citizens to be heard? Okay, ordinances for final passage. We have ordinance, council file number 16196, official file ordinance number 1, 2021, appropriating the sum of $2 million from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the City of Erie General Fund and utilized in the City of Erie Business Development Fund. Sponsored by Mrs. Schaff, seconded by Mr. Brzezinski, the council file number 16196 and now known as official file ordinance 1, 2021, be finally passed by city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Renarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City council passed official file ordinance 1, 2021, finally by yea seven, nay zero. Ordinance for first reading. Council file number 16197, appropriating the sum of $14,500 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof. This is from the Pennsylvania Fish and Boat Commission. Sponsored by Mr. Brzezinski, seconded by Mrs. Schaff, the council file ordinance number 16197, be adopted on first reading by city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Renarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City council read and adopt council file ordinance 16197 by yea seven, nay zero. Council file number 16198, appropriating the sum of 786,478, 786,470 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD for the following CDBD cares, CD19C projects. Sponsored by Mrs. Schaff, seconded by Mr. Brzezinski, the council file ordinance 16198, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Renarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City council read and adopt council file ordinance 16198 by yea seven, nay zero on first reading. Okay.
Call for a balance?
I need a sponsor in a second.
Move the ballots.
I'll second it.
Mr. Spoon and Mr. Renarski second. Any separations?
Okay, voting on the resolution. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Renarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. This takes us to committee reports.
I guess we could go in alphabetical order. So Ms. Allen, you're up.
No report.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple items. The Historic Preservation Task Force, we have a public hearing coming up on January 20th. Um, it's for the Historic Preservation Ordinance Overlay District and also the Historic Review Commission. Um, I would like to, I mentioned it several times, I would like to plan a council study session to review this task and next steps. Maybe we could do that on 21st or the 28th. I'll, um, review this with, uh, the clerk and, uh, with council president and we'll get it, uh, get it set up. We'll see what works out best. I'm not sure what else is coming up. Um, parking authority, uh, I know in the past we discussed the municipal services agreement proposal. Uh, that is still under review, uh, still being discussed. A meeting is going to be scheduled between the city administration, the EPA, parking authority. Uh, and again, I'll be attending, um, that meeting and report back to council on, uh, what the next steps are, so that council's fully informed. Um, the authority and authorities and boards process, the process, uh, as you know, was announced. Uh, I know Renee, uh, thank you for sending the email to all of council. It's been on, um, the City Berry, uh, website and also, uh, social media. Um, the City Grows link is, um, is out there to receive applications, application that due January 11th. Um, thank you, Renee. Um, if anyone's interested, please go to the City Berry website and apply. We need as many good cans as possible. If you're not selected in this round, because I know there's going to be many people who apply, uh, please continue to apply for future positions. Um, again, we appreciate all the work that went into this effort and I'm looking forward to more participation in government, especially from those who have never served before. Um, about, I just want to congratulate, uh, President Brzezinski and VP Michael Keys. I, I have high expectations with this coming year. I'm hoping that this year will be a year of goal-setting, coming together to create a list of priorities. Um, so we can get something done. We need to continue to focus on the issues that affect our city and also new initiatives as they arrive to keep, keep our city moving forward. I'm also hoping that we, we communicate more this year. It's often disappointing, uh, you know, for many members when we aren't informed of issues or resolutions till they appear on agenda or when I read them in a newspaper. Um, so again, you could just take a quick text or an email, whatever, just to keep up so informed. I know we get a thousand emails a day, but, uh, we still need to communicate. Um, in the past year, years in council, this hasn't, uh, this hasn't really been an issue, but I don't know if it's caused by the remote meetings, COVID. But I, I would like to see this change if possible. Um, yeah, I think we must communicate because this is how we make the decisions and how we create positive change. Uh, and again, that is why we're here. Uh, also, I wanted to congratulate Kathy Shaw for councilperson of the year. Uh, it's well deserved, Kathy. I know you put a lot of time, of your valuable time into efforts for council uh, and for, for many in our community. Your efforts are appreciated. I know you have inspired others and they'll continue to do that in the future. Um, happy new year to everybody. Um, and I am looking forward to prosperous year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Uh, Ms. Schaff?
Thank you, Mr. President. Best wishes to you and Mr. Keys in leading our city this year. And, um, I want to thank again, uh, Mr. Mel Witherspoon, um, for your kind words. Thank you. Um, last year, um, at the beginning of the year, I took the word purposeful and, uh, I did a little, um, line for each letter in the word purposeful and it hung in the bathroom of the, um, city hall. Um, and, um, this year, my word is hope-filled. H is for have faith and healing. O is for our youth and optimism. P is for patience and peace. E is for eagerment and to see enjoyment. F is for fill yourself with positive words and actions. I is for in all things, give thanks. L is for love one another. L is for listen to each other. E is for energizing yourself. And D is do everything with hope for a better tomorrow. So I'll make a poster of that and put it in the restroom to replace last year's one. Um, I want to thank the Public Works Department for working hard, uh, during this, uh, last year. And, um, we had some snowfall and they did their very best in, uh, cleaning out the streets. As much as possible. And I, uh, have been walking, um, still downtown. Uh, I did it yesterday and thankful to the residents who remove the snow because, um, some of the sidewalks are okay and, and some of them, um, you still have to be careful of ice and slipperiness. Um, I want to thank the police department. Um, they were able to, uh, get three, uh, teenagers who stole some guns and, um, terrorized people with those guns and our youth, I am so thankful to all the different people and organizations who are taking the time with our youth to, uh, help them, but it has to start in the home and as adults and people who are, uh, with our youth. Um, in your home life, you know, you have to make decisions on what your children are seeing and, and things like that. And I'm not over policing anything because, um, we need our youth to make good decisions and to stay, uh, healthy and whole, um, in our community to run purposeful lives. Um, of course, they shouldn't be going out, um, and terrorizing people. Um, and I don't want to, you know, make a bland statement that all youth are doing that. They're not, but, um, I just wanted to say, um, that it's really important that, um, we continue to, uh, help everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Can I ask you one favor? Could you continue the weekly meeting reports that you've been doing so greatly last year? Do you have any time to do that?
Thank you, President Brzezinski. I do have Tuesdays off, so I will be more than happy to, because now we're, we're down to our Tuesday and Fridays. Fridays, I do work, so I'm not able to do it on Fridays. But since it's just Tuesday and Friday, I can do the Tuesdays. Except for this coming Tuesday, I'm having two teeth pulled at ten AM, so.
Okay, thank you very much, and congratulations also on your reward. Okay, moving right along, Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a report, but once again, Kathy, you're just an outstanding person, a person with a big heart. And I appreciate the friendship that we have built. And if there's anything I can do for you at any point in time, call, and within my powers, I will make it happen. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon, and Mr. Winarski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just like I had mentioned earlier, twenty twenty was a real lucky year for all of us. Hoping that twenty twenty-one will definitely be a productive year, respectful year for everybody and our colleagues. But people have to understand council president, you're running a meeting, and you're, at the end, you're one of seven votes. So I appreciate the trust you have in me. I appreciate the support you give our new president, our new vice president. We are all in this together. We've got some very critical things to decide here, mainly with the, what we as a council
Are going to approve or do with the eighty-eight point five million left of that prepayment we got from the water. First and foremost, I put, I would put that at the top of my agenda that is critical for this year and years to come. So please, I just appreciate all the support. I appreciate your guys and your dedication to this office. Let's make it a great year. Thank you. Thank you.
New vice president.
I, first of all, would like to thank council for their unanimous vote. Your support means a great deal to me. I am looking forward to working in the new year. There's a lot of people, citizens, and you have been heard. If you haven't, you know, I've been a black person of color and a man all my life. I know about discrimination. I'm aware of it. And I will do everything to fight discrimination in private and in public spaces. Moving forward, though, I'm looking forward to see what we can achieve for this city. I believe that that's where we should set our priorities and that we need to work for not just a better environment, but a better city. And I intend to tirelessly work to attain that goal.
Thank you, Mike. If I can take a minute, my day started with the phone buzzing, and I got a wonderful message from Mr. Witherspoon. And I'd like to take that for all of us. He says that we, his hope is that we are blessed, guided, and protected as we move forward through trials that we are going to be facing here today, this year, and onto the future. Mel, it was a wonderful gesture. Thank you very much. I'm sure you send it to the other council members, too. But it was a shot in the arm that we all needed, I think. Moving forward, I would really impress on all of our council members to read up on Robert's Rules of Order. We will follow that. I'm not a hundred percent knowledgeable on every aspect of it. That's why we have Mr. Betsa here. But we will definitely treat everybody in a nice way. One of the things I'd like to do, you know, no matter what anybody tells you, one city council person can make a loud difference, but not a real difference. You have to have at least four votes, and I would like to see seven when we move forward on things that are very important to us as a city. That being said, Lori, maybe next Monday and Tuesday, if you can set up a few hours, Mr. Keys and I would very much like to meet different council members one-on-one to get their goals for the future and to see exactly where they feel they most, they can be most efficient for us. It doesn't do us any good. We heard a lot of yapping about four votes for me. Doesn't mean a thing. All seven people, all seven people have to do it. And I think sooner or later, we'll get there. The important thing is that we work together. So if Lori will set that up, Mr. Keys and I will sit down with everybody. We want everybody involved. One of the things that we're looking for in the future, if we ever get the city hall opened up, there are a lot of people out there that want to run for city council, as an example. It'd be a very good idea to get them in here and have a little learning session. Mr. Betsa could be with us here, and you can be told exactly what your role is as a council person. You know, if we wrapped it up in one word, it's the budget. But it's a whole lot more than that. We are the face of the city, and we want it to be a good face. So having said that, again, I thank you. I'll do my best, do a good job. With that being said, city controller, Ms. Sekwitz, you have anything for us? No? Kathy, you there? Teresa, I'm sorry. I'm still thinking of Kathy Schaff. How about, Renee? Renee, you still with us?
I'm here. Good morning, everyone. I just have three things to mention. First, the mayor is looking forward to continuing the weekly sessions with city council. That's a great time for us to kind of brief each other on upcoming issues or things that are going on. That's been set for Fridays at eleven, but if there's a better time, please let us know. We want to include as many council members as we can. Second is the downtown Y is offering starting today, two locations for their food pickup program. Thirty-first, thirty-one West Tenth Street, starting at three thirty, and then also at the east side Y, twenty-one oh one Nagle Road, beginning at three thirty. They're providing free, healthy, grab-and-go food boxes with fresh ingredients, including milk, fruit, and vegetables for kids ages two to eighteen. There are no income requirements or wide membership required. Food boxes will include enough food for five complete meals and instructions for preparation and storage. It's free and open to the public. And adults with no children also are welcome to take a box through June thirtieth, and an adult must be present for each box. The boxes are limited and will be distributed on a first-come, first-served basis, and face masks are required. And then finally, I'm just picking up on Councilman Brennan's remarks regarding the authorities, boards, and commissions. As he mentioned, the process is now open until January eleventh at eleven fifty-nine PM. We have, between city council and the mayor, my dog's barking, about twenty-five positions open. Residents can go to the city's website at cityof.eary.p a.us slash ABCs. That's A B C S. There, they can find information on all of the city's authorities, boards, and commissions, as well as the link to the City Grows application process. We have all the information now compiled so that residents can see the roles and responsibilities of each authority, board, or commission, when they meet, who, who's currently serving on the board, what the skill sets and expertise are needed for each one, and a whole host of other information. So we invite people to apply. Council will receive the resumes and applications from those who are, who are looking to be appointed to open council positions. And the mayor's staff will review those for the mayoral appointments. And if necessary, interviews will be conducted, depending on the number that are received. I did notice that there were several hundred people that started an application, and I just want to make sure that people know only completed applications will be reviewed. Thanks very much. That's all I have.
Renee?
Yes.
Mr. President, could you send that link to me? Or I'm not sure if everybody have that link, but can you send that out, please? Thank you.
Yes.
That's all, all set, Renee? How about Attorney Betsa?
I do not have anything.
Thank you for the clarification at the beginning of the meeting, sir.
Oh, you bet. Thank you.
Okay, and the mayor, I don't know, Mayor Joe, you there? I'm not there, okay. I guess that puts a cork in it. Have a good night, a better week.
City Council adjourns at ten twenty-two AM.
Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, and Mr. Brzezinski.